Yes, Jordan.
We're trying to get everybody to join the meeting. We've been, we've been having some technical difficulties. Appreciate y'all waiting. And we are still working on joining Brian Nash and Alex Robinett. I see Brian looks like he's joined again. Do I need to promote him to panelist? Yes.
Go ahead if you can.
Oh, boy.
You might have. Okay, I promoted Brian. Oh, I see you're unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me? I look good.
Okay.
That's, that was a straight comment. It was.
We can't see you yet.
Got it. Thanks, Ash.
Brian, I'll take your word for it that you look really good.
Oh.
There you are.
I thought it was Harrison Ford for a second.
That's right. That's right. Just crashed my.
Jordan, wanted to let you know that we have Barrett Lepore, who is the plat applicant. And we also have Mayor Dyson and Mayor Protim Massengill, in case you at any point would like to call on them. Just let me.
Thank you.
I will unmute them. Um.
Well, while Ashley's trying to get on, why don't we take care of business? That's simple. So then we can tee up for, sorry, not Ashley. Who's trying to get on?
I'm looking with Alex right now. So I'll throw myself on mute and kind of try to deal with her and get her logged in. In the meantime, y'all want to get going.
Okay. Well, why don't we go ahead and start a roll call then here at 12:13? I think everybody just needs to, the key, and we'll remind everybody over and over. We may at times mute everybody. If we unmute you, you will need to press the microphone icon to truly go unmuted. It's a little bit different than some of the other ones. There's that second, you have to unmute yourself. Amber can't just do it for us all. So why don't we go down the line? I'll start. Jordan Scott, chair. Amy, why don't you follow?
I'm here.
How do we want to do it, Amber?
Well, I mean, we can see each other, so I guess we're all present.
Yeah, it's important for the record to go ahead and document. So if you want to just, you'll also be doing a record roll call votes. So if you just want to go in the order of people listed, you know, Amy, and then Mike, and just kind of follow that order.
Yeah, I don't know if my order is the same as yours. I'll use my order.
It looks like Alex is on. Can we promote her to panelist? Okay.
So Amy is here.
They're pulling you up now, Alex.
Alex, are you on?
There she is. Alex, you have to mute yourself.
Can we, can we bring the labradoodle back into the office? Appreciate. I feel like that's a good city mascot.
Yes. I mean, do you even live in Rollingwood if you don't own a golden doodle? The official city dog.
All right. I think we're all on, yeah? We have.
Yes, and so. Jamil?
Can y'all hear me?
Now we can.
Yes.
No.
Yeah, Jamil's, Jamil's here.
Okay.
Just don't forget about Jamil when you do.
I'm gonna do a quick roll call. Say your first name, say your entire name and hear present. Sorry, guys, that it's like ninth grade math class in here, but we're gonna get it done. Amy, are you present?
I am present and here.
Okay, Alex, present?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Jamil, present?
Neil, Jamil's here.
Great. Brian, present?
Present.
Fantastic. Tony, present?
I'm here.
All right, and Mike?
I'm here.
Fantastic. Um, that was our roll call. We're also gonna welcome you guys. Mike Rhodes, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Josh McKay has moved again, so he, he is no longer able to sit on the P&amp;Z. So he has given his official notice, and it's been accepted by the mayor and city council. Mike applied, and we're glad to have you. Want to give a quick, a quick one-minute speech about yourself, Mike?
Um, sure. Um, you know, I have a construction company. I've got, I'm an engineer and a real estate broker. So I've got a little bit of experience on getting different cities and development zoning matters. So I'm excited to serve and make good things happen.
Well, Mike, we're glad to have you onboard, and we appreciate your service to the city of Rollingwood. All right, at this time, we'll talk about any public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Amber, do we have anybody who's indicated a desire to discuss anything not on the agenda? Fortunately, we can't hear you, Amber.
Sorry, mute hazard. I'll explain how everybody can participate. If you're participating on, on your computer, at the bottom, there should be a little hand. And if you want to click on that hand, I will, I will sort and know that you ever raised your hand and would like to speak. And then I will lower your hand and unmute you. You will have to unmute yourself, and then you can, you can start speaking. And Ashley, do you recall the way they participate by phone? I believe they press two.
I think it should have given you instructions when you called in. I believe it's stars for any kind of menu options, and I think two is raise your hand. So I think star is, is menu.
Okay. And then if they're participating on an iPhone or an iPad, they also see at the bottom a place where they can raise their hand. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a little setting bubble. I think it has three little dots in it. And then when you click on that, there is a raise your hand option.
Okay, so. Jordan, at this time, I don't see anybody's hand raised yet.
Okay, well, then hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. The only item on that is our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Does anybody need to poll the minutes from the previous meeting in March? All right, hearing no motion to poll. Is there a motion then to approve our consent agenda consisting of the minutes from our March 4th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Brian, you look like you want to make a motion.
I was trying to raise my hand. I so moved.
Okay. Who would like to second?
Second. I can second.
All right, I'm gonna give that to Mike, so he's officially on the record. So Mike seconded. Brian, appreciate your motion. Any further discussion of the motion? All right, all in favor, roll call. Just say aye if you are in agreement, nay if you are not in agreement. Amy?
I'm gonna abstain. I was not.
All right, thank you for bringing up the third option, which is an abstention. Amy abstains. Alex?
I approve. Yes.
Jamil?
Aye.
Brian? Brian gives a thumbs up. Tony?
I'll abstain too, since I wasn't there.
Okay, Mike, you weren't on the commission at the time, and finally, myself, I'm aye. But Mike, do you want to abstain?
Yes.
I'll take, you know, according to Robert's rules, you can always vote on minutes, even if you weren't a part of the meeting.
100% vote on it, even if you weren't there. We will accept abstentions. I think we have enough to pass, yeah? I had Alex, Jamil, Brian, and myself, which should. That gives us a majority. All right, motion carries, consent agenda is approved. All right, um, we're gonna have a quick review of some rules. Amber, can you lead this section?
Sure, we've got Charlie on the line.
Oh, even better.
Yes. Because we have a rezoning item before, before you, we thought best to include our code regarding the rezoning and also the state statute. Let me see if I can share my screen. Okay, so the first, can y'all see Division Four Changes in Regulations or zoning district boundaries?
Yes.
Okay, if you go to section C, what is important and significant to the commission is to understand, and the residents to understand that. If there is filed with the city a written protest against such change, signed by the owners of 20% or more, either of the area of the lots or land included in such proposed change, or the lots or land immediately adjoining the same and extended 200 feet therefrom, such change will not be approved except by the favorable vote of at least four-fifths of the whole number of the members of the city council. So if you receive protests, the land of the area of 20% or more, council must have a supermajority approval to pass that zoning. And then something similar in the Texas Local Government Code, subsection D, if a proposed change is protested in accordance with this subsection, it, in order to take effect, the affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the governing body. And so it also alludes to the 21st protest of the area of the lot immediately adjoining. So, um, in your consideration, we will also make sure we, we share this with council, but it's important to know in your consideration, if you were to receive that many protests, which we will inform you about, then it requires a supermajority positive vote in order for the change to take effect. Did I do okay, Charlie? Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to add, I just want to add one thing that the, the underlying issue associated with this is that we had a, we had the P&amp;Z decide that they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna take any action. They weren't gonna make a recommendation or not make a recommendation. And it's a little weird because the Texas Local Government Code actually requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide a report to city council. The local government code doesn't actually say a recommendation. It says you must provide a report. But our ordinance, our local ordinance, section 107519, says that after a public hearing, the commission will make its recommendation regarding the change in the regulation or boundaries. So our, and that makes sense because if you're gonna recommend denial, then there's this requirement of a supermajority of council to overrule that denial. And so as a result of, of our ordinance provision that says a recommendation is required, we need to make the recommendation on, in, in all matters with respect to a zoning, rezoning request or a zoning request. Either a recommended denial, or a recommended approval, or a recommended approval with a, you know, a change. Whatever it is, there needs to be a recommendation, not just simply a report. And that's, so this is just a reminder moving forward for all the board that we need to be sure that we do that.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Brian, you're sideways now.
He's napping.
I kind of, I kind of feel like Brian is always a little sideways.
All right, any other questions on, on this particular section in the rules for our rezoning? All right, we'll also give a reminder at our next meeting on this as well. Okay, let's go ahead and move forward then. To item number five, which is gonna be a public hearing. I have no idea how public hearings work, Amber, on Zoom or on virtual. But we're gonna open up the public hearing by my time, so 12:27. And it's a discussion and action, possible action on a replat for 603 Riley Road. Carrie, are you on? And can you take us through the plat?
Yes, I am on. You will see in your packet the plat application, the proposed plat, and then my review comments. Has anybody had a chance to, to look at those comments?
Why don't you just walk them through, Carrie?
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
My, my assessment is that the property owners have requested to plat this property with the front yard facing Riley Road. It's my understanding that current house faces that way, and that the topography of Timberline right there lends them, you know, they think that it makes sense to have the property facing that direction. I totally understand where they're coming from and why they would want it plotted that direction. I see there being an issue with how the lots abut, that essentially to plat this property that way would have their side yard abutting the rear yard of the Garcia plat that came through P&amp;Z in November. So because of that, I recommend, my recommendation was denial of this plat. They've also requested a 20-foot building setback line along Timberline. And then the PUE along this side of the narrow property that they're adjoining in this plat, I see it as needing to be extended, as well as PUEs and rightaways along Riley and Timberline. But I, the applicant wanted to come before planning and zoning and make their case as to why it should be laid out in this fashion, and I thought it would be good to give them that opportunity and, and let planning and zoning provide guidance.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Oh, are they planning to rebuild? Is that the objective?
Uh, I.
Applicant is on. We could have the applicant that.
Right, the applicant is on.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we hear from the applicant, and then we can have either the applicant or Carrie answer questions we might have? Does that work?
It works.
Great, Amber, once you bring them on, and, and just a reminder, you, you have to unmute yourself after Amber unmutes you. You will then need to unmute yourself by pressing the microphone icon.
Let me ask one quick question before we start. Can you remind me what the side step back is on a corner lot normally?
30 feet.
30 versus the 20 shown on here?
Correct.
Okay.
And Barry, it looks like he's unmuted and ready to talk.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come speak with you guys. I'm gonna try to clear my screen. I prepared some information to better explain the situation. So let me know if, when you guys can see this. Can you guys see my screen?
We can. I can.
Okay, well, I will run through this, but I appreciate you guys allowing us the opportunity to present our situation. This is a little bit of an odd circumstance, given where we are located, and I'll explain why. But so this is just vicinity map showing where we're located within the city of Rollingwood. We're at the far eastern end of Timberline, at the corner of Riley and Timberline. This is a copy of our existing survey. And Carrie mentioned just a minute ago, the Garcia plat that came before you guys a few months back is to our north. And our property was, it was subdivided into two different subdivision plats. The first being the, the red property, and then the second being a sliver in the back that was part of a separate subdivision. I'll go through that. But ultimately, we have two legal lots that we want to replat into a single legal lot, similar to what our next-door neighbor did. This is a copy of what you have in your packet, which is just a depiction of our proposed plat. This is the comment that Carrie went through just a minute ago. It was provided by staff. And, you know, the most, the biggest thing to discuss today is, is the orientation of our front yard on Riley versus Timberline, and where the side yard setbacks would be. So we'll get into some more detail. This is a markup of our proposed, our proposed plat. Our house currently fronts Riley Road, and we would like to, at some point in the future, rebuild on this lot to answer the question from one of the commissioners. And we would like to maintain our front yard on Riley Road. It's, as you guys know, this area of Timberline really starts to dive off and is not a great place for a front door. Not to mention that, you know, this is the current orientation of our home. We would like a 20-foot building setback line on Timberline Drive, a 20-foot rear yard setback to the east in a 10-foot setback on the north. On the public utility perspective, we're okay with the 10-foot PUE on the east side of our property, abutting our next-door neighbor to the east. There's currently an existing five-foot electric lines easement that's on the north. We would like to maintain that five-foot width on the north side of our property. You know, those lines have been there for 40 years, and we've never heard from the electric company or the telecommunications providers that there's been a need for an additional width of an easement. So our preference would be to keep the five-foot width. And I'll go, I'll talk more about that here in a minute as well. This is just a colored depiction of what ultimately the green would be, the buildable area of our lot. And the yellow zones would be the public easements on the side yard and rear yard of our property. A couple of excerpts from the ordinance, the code of ordinances about yards. And Tony, this will answer one of your questions. So our, our street address is 603 Riley Road, and is item up here, item C from 10775, says that a lot is their street address is determined based on their front yard for a corner lot. And based on the current orientation and current addressing the property, we firmly believe that our front yard is Riley Road. The front yard of each lot will have a minimum depth of 30 feet. No issues there. The side yard of each lot shall have a minimum depth of 10 feet when you abut another lot, so an interior side yard setback. And then what Carrie mentioned is it's 30 feet when you're on a corner, except as described in the item below. And item three says it's 20 feet on a street on a corner when two lots extend the length of one block and have abutting rear lot lines. And we'll talk about that in a second. We think that this applies to our property, and that our rear property line is the eastern property line of our property, where my backyard and my neighbor's backyard abut. And then the rear yard of each property has a minimum depth of 20 feet. So we're abiding by all of the dimensional criteria. The only real question is, where's the front yard? Which, which orientation is our front yard? And our, our position is that it's the same orientation as it has been for the past 44 years. The next item on here is regarding the public utility easements. The code requires that easements of at least 10 feet in width shall be retained on each rear lot line, which we agree with. And then where necessary, and I emphasize where necessary, easements not less than 10 feet in width on each side of side lot lines. Obviously, we have utilities on our northern property line that are in existing five-foot easement, and we would like to maintain the five-foot easement. And where necessary, provide discretion as to how wide that easement can be. Going back, this is the original subdivision plat that platted the western or kind of main portion of our property. This was recorded in 1966, and there were some changes in this area at that time. Riley Road was contemplated to be a straightened road. As you know, this has got the intersection here, Riley and Timber, Riley and Rollingwood. And Riley was anticipated to extend all the way to BK's Road. Ultimately, that plan changed, and you can see the evidence of that on the next plat, which was the Rollingwood Park Estates plat, which platted the portion of the subdivision close to New Silver. And you'll note a couple of things. There's a note here on, on the plat that says tracks. So there's a sliver from my neighbor's property and a sliver behind my property. They have what's called Lot A, and I had what's called Lot B. And it always contemplated tracks A and B are to be conveyed to the adjacent property owners at a future date. So it was always contemplated, when this property was plotted, that the blue lot would become part of ours, and likewise, Lot A would become part of the Garcia's. You'll also note that Timberline Drive between these two subdivision plats changes in width from 60 feet to 50 feet. And that transition happens right in between the two lots that are on our property. As evidence here, the 50-foot right-of-way dimension here and here. And further, there's a 25-foot building setback on this, it's. And further, there's a 25-foot building setback, uh, on this, it's shown on, uh, the Rollingwood Park Estates subdivision. And if you'll notice, that comes around, and where the five-foot jog exists would actually be a 20-foot setback on my property, making it consistent with this 20-foot setback that I'm requesting on our property. So we wouldn't be sticking out proud of my next door neighbor on Timberline. And likewise, the 30-foot that we're requesting on, on Riley Road would be consistent with the 30-foot that is, uh, approved on my next door neighbors to the north. So circling back to our existing survey, uh, our current, our current front yard is on Riley Road, as evidenced by our front walkway and our front door. Our side yard adjacent to the Garcia's is currently 10 feet, which we're asking for to maintain the 10-foot setback on our interior side yard. Uh, there's an existing 20-
Is it 10 or 9/8?
Well, it, it, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how the surveyor measured that, but it shows 9/8 on the survey. There actually is no setback in, in, on this property. The only setback that exists in, in, in a platted setback is this one, other than zoning requirements. Now, obviously, this, this house was built in 1976. And at that point in time, I'm not positive what the side yard setback is. I'm sure it was 10, and there might be some tolerance issues here, but in, 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 in reality, my existing home is 10 feet, roughly 10 feet from my, my northern property line. Uh, this is the 25-foot building line that exists on Track B, uh, which would be the extension of the 20-foot setback along our property line that we're requesting. Again, noting the, the five-foot, uh, electric lines easement on the north side, and the right-of-way transition with here in the flat. This is an aerial view of the four lot configuration of this block. And, you know, because the way the code reads, it leaves a lot, uh, of interpretation, this is open to interpretation. More, more corner lots. Uh, and there are some examples in Rollingwood where corner lots do not make a two-lot block. In this case, it's undoubtedly that there, I either make a two-lot block this way or a two-lot block this way. And so that provision C3, it all, you know, certainly applies to my property. The only distinction is, where's my rear yard? And my argument is, my backyard is here, my next door neighbor's backyard is here. This is our shared real property line. And likewise, this house, also from this Timberline, making it their backyard. This is a bit of an odd configuration on their property, and we can, we can talk about that. So I, in, in the same configuration, uh, I provided, uh, views of the fronts of each one of these houses, with my house being number one. And this is the view from Riley Road where my front door sits. Uh, this is my next door neighbor, the Garcia's, which, uh, you know, is currently vacant and, uh, in all likelihood planned to be, uh, a new home. This is the front of the house on Timberline, and this is my adjoining neighbor. It's also on Timberline. It's hard to see through all the trees, but this is their front door, as indicated by their front walkway. This next image is, uh, views from what I would call each one of the side yards of these, of these lots. And you'll notice that this is clearly my side yard. Um, this is clearly my next door neighbor's side yard. This is, uh, the house on Rollingwood and Timberline is their side yard. And then this house that may or may not be rebuilt at some point, in all likelihood will put their front door on Riley Road and not on Timberline, or on, on Rollingwood Drive. So, uh, in summary, my approval request is to have my 30-foot front yard building line on Riley Road, my 20-foot street side yard on Timberline Drive, my 10-foot interior side yard on the north, 20-foot rear yard on the south, and then having the 10-foot PUE on the rear yard and the five-foot PUE on, the PUE on the interior side yard. And with that, I will wrap up and take any questions.
Any questions from the commission for our applicant? Any questions for Carrie from the commission?
Yeah, I guess Carrie, I, maybe, maybe it would have been better to have you go after that, but I guess now, I, I guess the applicant's asking to maintain, you know, their front yard and their address where it's currently. Can you walk us, or walk me again through, you know, quickly, your objections, I guess?
Sure, um, uh, because of the way, okay. Let me, let me start by saying, um, y'all looked at the Garcia plat in November. That plat has been approved. It has not been filed with the county because I need some additional documents from the Garcia's to file. But that plat was approved, and it, uh, shows their rear yard abutting this side, what would be the interior side yard of this plat. This is a unique situation, which is why I wanted it to come before y'all, because it, it really is that these, uh, four lots make a block. That, that said, you know, as the applicant said, the Garcia's, you know, if they built a new home there, they may elect for their front door to face Rollingwood Drive, or they may elect toward to face Riley Road. There's no reason that this applicant couldn't, uh, replat with, uh, the, uh, front yard being oriented toward Timberline so that the rear yards are abutting and still orient his home however he wishes to orient it. Whether that was to face Riley Road or whether that was to face Timberline. We don't, we don't have any restrictions. Your front, your front door could face Timberline, or it could face Riley Road. Because of the way this property is situated and the other properties, the Garcia's were required to replat with their property facing Rollingwood Drive, with a 30-foot front yard and 30-foot side yard along Riley Road because their property didn't form a block as it was. So it, it is kind of complicated because both of these plats, uh, are, are linked together. And it would have made a lot of sense, you know, had, had we known that this was going to happen in this way, for both applicants to approach us together so that each could receive a 20-foot setback along Riley Road rather than having a, or having their front yard on Riley Road, rather than having one plat limited for what they can do because of the other plat. So they're kind of contingent on each other, um, which is the hard part with the review on this one.
So, so I guess that, that would be your concern, is the lack of alignment between the two plats along Riley Road?
Yes, correct.
So you mentioned that the, I don't know if this is even possible or practical. You mentioned that they, that the Garcia's hadn't filed their plat with the county yet. And obviously, we approved what we approved, but to your point, it sounds like that's really the, of these four lots, it appears that's the one, kind of the outlier. The way it was approved, I mean, is there any, any possibility we could see if they were open to replating it with like, you know, I mean, maybe they would even prefer to replat it, particularly if they may be fronting their house on Riley Road anyway?
Um, we could, we could absolutely approach them about that. I, I think that's a good idea. The one thing that it, it wouldn't solve is that for those two lots to make a block would require the, would require, would require them to be oriented such that they were rear abutting along what's on there as an interior side yard, which I don't know that the LaFours would be interested in. I mean, that would put us right back at, um, you know, having their side yard on Riley and their front yard on Timberline. Now, again, that said, there's no reason, they would have to comply with the building setbacks, but their home itself could face either direction, and they could request to keep their current, uh, address. There's no reason that we would have to force them to have a Timberline address if they wanted to keep their 603 Riley Road address.
I don't know if I'm missing something. If, if they were both running Riley, and then both the, the, the back lots are both running Timberline, wouldn't they, wouldn't both of those be contiguous block where you could have all of the setbacks on Rollingwood? I mean, the current, the one on the corner of Riley and Rollingwood, somebody's gonna tear that down at some point. And you've got, you know, existing house on the corner of Timberline and Rollingwood that's oriented to Timberline and has a side setback presumably along Rollingwood. So if the corner of Riley and Rollingwood were, you know, platted like this one is proposed to be platted, then you'd have two back-to-back situations that were more contiguous, and you'd have your front yards on Riley in line, presumably on Timberline in line, and then presumably on Rollingwood and, and, uh, Timberline aligned as well.
I'm not sure if, I would have to do some more research to see if lots, I think it's 10 and 11 have been platted. Might be able to get an answer to that right now. If they have not, it would be my understanding that we would have to have all four platted at one time to make, to make this work. But, uh, let me see if-
Well, and I, and I, and we approved, and we approved what we approved for the Garcia's. I have no idea if they'd have any interest in changing, and we approved it, but, I don't know. I guess it's, it seems tough to me to have somebody, a lot of house, but, but have an address on Riley and fronts on Riley. You know, come forward with a plat, and I just have to tell them they need to change the orientation, or I guess, I guess you're saying they don't have to change the orientation, but change the setbacks, the front on Timberline and the address to be on Timberline. You know, with, with no way they could have foreseen that in buying the, the property. And where it doesn't seem like, of these four lots and the way they're oriented and everything, it seems like they're not the outlier for, and we're now kind of talking about dictating to them, you know, what, what may have to happen based on a recent plat approved next to them, I guess. That's, that's given me a little trouble.
Well, I don't think we're dictating to them. Um, the code says that in order to form one block, they have to have rear abutting blocks. And so I think the code's pretty clear on that. So if he wanted to get his neighbor, I think Carrie's trying, go ahead, Charlie.
I want to make sure I understand. I, I think I understand. It's, it, that there's provisions of the zoning ordinance that Carrie is interpreting and, and believes she's interpreting them appropriately. And so, um, this body, of course, cannot, you know, approve something that's in violation of our zoning code. And if, if the applicant believes that Carrie's interpretation of the zoning code is incorrect, or if Carrie's interpretation of the zoning code is correct, and they desire to do something differently, they would need to request a variance. Both of those are required to go to the zoning board of adjustment in order for that to occur. This body doesn't have any authority to approve a, a plat that is in violation of the zoning. And so, um, what I'm hearing is Carrie said, this is my opinion on the interpretation of the code. So one of two things has to happen. Either A, they challenge the decision at the zoning board of adjustment, or they request a variance, um, from the code requirement as a result of some neat, um, some, um, issue with the property. That's what I'm hearing.
This is, this is, here, may I respond real quick?
Okay.
May I respond? This, so this is, uh, can you guys see my screen still?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so item C3, where we talked about side yards, we're talking about 20 feet when you have two lots that extend the length of one block and have a budding rear lot lines. We flip back to a copy of the plat. There are four lots here. My backyard is currently here. Lot 10's backyard is currently here. I'm asking for this to be my rear yard, my rear setback, my, my rear yard. Lot 11 has their rear yard here. It would only make sense for this lot. I don't know why they applied to have their rear yard adjacent to my side yard. Hold on, uh, but-
We're not talking of that plat.
One of the plats, we're being held to a standard based on an unrecorded plat.
Well, and there are, there are other issues regarding the, um, PUE. That would have to be considered by the zoning board of adjustment as well.
Okay.
Do you have a question? How do, so, so how do, I guess, Carrie, how do we know that the-
My, my-
Tony Stein, please. Guys, this is Tony Stein. Please speak.
Yeah, I guess I'm getting confused on how, what dictates which is the back. I mean, obviously Carrie is saying the back is the one facing the one we recently platted. Barrett is saying that the back is where the back is currently and, and backs up to the Timberline corner lot. I guess what is, what in the code or what dictates which is the rear?
Um, this is, this is a really hard case, uh, because like the applicant has stated, the other two properties, you know, his property does back up in the rear of Lot 10. In, in the case of the Garcia plat, because their address is listed as Rollingwood Drive, they wanted to keep their Rollingwood Drive address and applied for the plat you know, such that the home was oriented to face Rollingwood Drive, therefore making their rear yard abut the LaFours' side yard.
So, so because theirs is platted with that as the rear, that means that's also the rear of the one adjacent, I guess, is, is Lot 10 not platted?
These are all platted. This is a copy of the plat.
So where's the rear on Lot 10 according to the plat? Not the plat you're showing me. That, that just shows me building setback lines. It's not indicating, the current plat that I'm seeing in the bottom right-hand corner doesn't indicate which is the rear of Lot 10.
Correct. However, this is their rear yard. Likewise, Lot 11, this is their rear yard. Their house is faced to the east.
Well, we could reevaluate, um, that- Well, we could reevaluate, um, that determination, but it doesn't, it still remains, um, the, the PUE and right-of-ways, the PUEs and right-of-ways are still not in compliance with what we require, uh, in application, i- in a submission, rather.
Let's say I complied and we are just talking about the building lines. I'd, I'd like to resolve one issue at a time, if possible.
Well, here's, here's the problem. This, wait a minute. This, this body doesn't have authority to resolve these problems. The zoning board of adj, my understanding of these are zoning, most of these are zoning questions. This body doesn't have authority to resolve these problems. If there is an issue or a problem with the interpretation of the code, that goes to the zoning board of adjustment for determination, not the, not the planning and zoning condition. The planning and zoning commission is obligated to approve and disapprove plats and do other things consistent with the code. And those, those interpretations are brought forward by the building administrator. If there are issues with those interpretations, that goes to the zoning board of adjustment. The planning and zoning commission doesn't have the authority to resolve those issues.
All right. So based on that lack of authority, I'm going to make a motion to reject the plat as proposed and suggest the applicant connect with our, uh, board of adjustment to determine answers to those three questions.
Can we close the public hearing as well?
Do we need to close it before we make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me rephrase this. Is there anybody, before I make a motion, motion withdrawn. Is there anybody from the public, anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this topic before we go into regular session?
Chairman, there is nobody-
If so, you need to, yeah, they need to raise their hand.
Nobody has their hand raised, chairman.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lepore, would you like to say anything else before we, uh, adjourn to a regular session?
No, I, I don't think so. I guess we'll, we'll go get a, a different interpretation of the code. The, the way I look at it, there's four lots and either direction you look at it, it's going to create a two-lot block. So the most likely orientation is to leave the rear yards where the rear yards are and not make my yard subject to an unrecorded plat that may or may not have, that may or may not ever get recorded. That's my plea. So there, the interpretation will go either way. Um, I'm interpreting it based on what's out there and it's been there for 44 years. Um, not based on an unrecorded plat. So with that, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Okay. We're going to, uh, adjourn to regular session then at 1:03. Um, is there any further discussion or a motion? I'm happy to make a motion if anybody else wants to as well.
I would just like to make a comment.
Alex, you're really quiet.
Oh, I don't know how to fix the sound. Um.
Lean in.
Oh, okay. This is Robbie's-
That's better.
So, I'm in uncharted territory. Is that better? Okay. I just want to make a comment that I think that there's a precedent here. Um, and I realize that we don't have the authority to really comment on this or do anything, but the fact that this house has been as it is for 40 years, I think is worth considering. Um, it's already set up that way. And I also very much in favor of residents that want to redevelop their own property because I think that they're going to do the right thing. Their confidence in their neighbors and they're going to be respectful of that. And so I just kind of want to make that statement, even though it has no bearing on this discussion.
I mean, to me, and I, I don't, i- i- if it's board of adjustment, if, if the backyard of lot 10 faces this new plat, which is going to be one lot, I mean, you could argue that there are three lots there. We're going to combine two of them to make it two lots is, is the proposal right now. Uh, and if there's two rear adjoining lots, I don't really, the Garcia's sort of, that's not the block. The block is between 10 and this particular one in my mind. But it sounds like it's board of adjustment that needs to take care of this, um, because they have the authority. So my motion is to reject and recommend that the board of adjustment take this up in their next meeting.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay. Amy seconded. Um, happy to have any further discussion of the motion.
Yeah, I, I would just make the, kind of the similar comment to Alex and say, my understanding, and I don't know specific to this. I've never gone in front of board of adjustment. I just hear that the, um, you know, the bars for, or the bar for getting, um, you know, approval of, of waivers is high. And, you know, it seems to me that this is a, you know, a little bit of a coin flip on interpretation and they're going to be subject to a high bar for getting approval. So I would just say, you know, my recommendation to the applicant would be to get with the Garcias, see if they have any appetite for changing things and have further discussion with, um, with Carrie around that. And, you know, I would say that it's probably going to be better if, if those parties could all come to some sort of agreement, uh, absent our approval to do anything, you know, before you just go in front of the board. It's a good recommendation.
Yeah, this Jamil, I've got a question when there's an opening.
Go ahead, Jamil.
So, um, maybe it's a question for Charlie, but, uh, to the extent the Garcia's agreed to modify their plat, does that change in your mind PNZ's ability to weigh in on this topic? Because I, I kind of land where Tony and Alex do. Um, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage because I, I've had to leave the house and have not been able to see all the materials, but, um, but I, I, I tend to think that, uh, that this is going to result in a higher bar for the applicant that may be an unnecessarily higher bar because of what's happened next door with Garcia.
Um, I think I can handle this answer. If, if they addressed the PUE line issue and then they were able to, um, get the Garcias on-
Hey Amber, I was, I was, I was starting to answer, but I was muted and I didn't realize it. I apologize.
Go.
So here's my answer to the question. Those are legitimate. I mean, that's a legitimate concern. I, um, you know, on, on behalf of the applicant, it should be an app, a concern of the applicant. That said, um, a, a, um, challenge of the interpretation of the code to the zoning board of adjustment that this is not the same bar as trying to, trying to get a variance. And so going to the ZPOA is just making your argument, um, it's, you know, 50/50 toying costs up, which direction they're going to go based on who, on, on who, who they believe the correct interpretation is. So there's not a higher bar to get over for purposes of, of the interpretation. Now, if the interpretation is consistent, um, by the zoning board of adjustment is consistent with the position of the city, um, then they would have to request a variance to the code and that variance is where this higher bar would come in, that they would be required to jump over for purposes of, of, of being granted a variance. However, an interpretation before the zoning board of adjustment is, is just like going before any other body and convincing them that they, uh, that their, that their interpretation is correct. No different than if you, than, than any decisions you make on zoning decisions, actually. For approval or reapproval of zoning decisions.
So I guess theoretically, like you could go up in front of them. Um, and I guess if they deny, if they deny him, then or they, they find the code compliance issue to be in line with Carrie's interpretation, then I guess subsequent to that, they could go for a variance to zoning in front of the same board?
I, I, I don't want to say that's true. I don't, I'm not as intimately familiar with the facts of this. Um, um, but my guess is if we're talking about setback issues or any other zoning issue, then yes, the applicant could request a variance from the zoning code. And that's where that higher hurdle comes up is when you're requesting a variance. Uh, but just requesting, you know, challenging the interpretation of the code by the city zoning official is, is, um, not, you know, it's just making your case. That's all it is.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing done. We're going to go ahead and then take a vote on a motion to, uh, reject the application and recommend, uh, the applicant apply with the zoning board of adjustment for a different interpretation. Um, all in favor, we're going to do this by roll call. Signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Amy?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Jamil?
Uh.
Was that an aye, Jamil?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Uh, Brian? Do we lose Brian?
He mentioned he may have to step out around, at some, meaning that he may be out.
All right. Uh, Tony?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I'll say aye as well. Um, all right. Then motion Carrie's, uh, plat is not allowed. Um, I really do think board of adjustment is going to take a look at this and understand the difference between the Garcias and lot 10 and be able to identify which ways the block. Um, it seems to me like Garcias are kind of one of these kids is doing their own thing, like the old Sesame Street song. So I do think both recommendations of talk to board of adjustment, if they're the ones allowed to settle it, they'll do it and will do it legally. And also talk to the Garcias and see if they want to reverse the way they platted, um, are both viable ways forward. Um, all right. Let's move on then to, sorry, let me clear up all the stuff here. We're going to move on then to item number six in our regular agenda, discussion of rezoning of 503 Vale Street from residential to government and institutional. Um, why don't we go ahead? It's not so, this, this is just a, a first meeting on this, uh, topic. We, it came before us when there wasn't enough time for proper notification and noticing. So it's not, it's not an official public hearing. Um, we agreed to put this on the agenda. Um, before we move forward, because this may take a while, we've got quite a few people who want to speak on it. I think we'll start with asking the mayor to speak, um, to give us some background. We'll then take comments from the public. Please keep those to about three minutes. Um, and then we will talk about it, uh, amongst the commissions. So it's not an official public hearing, but we can kind of have some discussion. Y'all, we cannot take action on this item today. We did not have, it wasn't properly noticed for us to take any action. So this is purely a chance to start getting some of the, uh, items for discussion, um, out on the table so that they can be discussed in a calm and rational fashion between this meeting and our next meeting, which we will be taking this back up again, having another public, uh, hearing and then discussing any, any action that this commission may wish to take. Are there any questions from the commission about, um, about the process? Okay. One other caveat. I have a hard stop in about half an hour. Uh, Commissioner Stein has a hard stop at two. So, um, if we go longer than that, we may need, I, I'm going to ask Tony to take over when I leave and then we may need someone else to take over after, if he has to go, um, to go through this. Um, all right. Well, let's go. Uh, can we please ask, uh, Mayor Dyson to unmute and, uh, give us a quick rundown of what's going on?
Yeah. Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Great. I appreciate you having me. So, uh, taking it all the way back to the beginning, why is this even a point of conversation? Uh, under Roxanne McKee, uh, she, uh, uh, while the city council approved and, and Roxanne spearheaded a spatial needs assessment, uh, the spatial needs assessment was, uh, understood by all to be necessary to get a good firm understanding of, um, and we all knew, uh, and all know that we don't have enough room at City Hall, uh, to house, uh, current, um, current staff and, and, uh, administration and, and our PD. Uh, but what we really wanted to know was really clear indication of what our needs are going to be, not just now, but uh, for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years kind of thing. Uh, so we hired Brinkley Sargent. Uh, that report, uh, as I said, was commissioned, um, with, uh, Roxanne McKee. It wasn't delivered finalized until April of 2019. I believe you guys have all been provided a copy of that. Uh, so just to be very clear, the problem that we are trying to solve for is a spatial needs, um, roughly 8,500 square foot, uh, which is necessary, uh, identified, uh, roughly 1,800 square feet, uh, was identified as necessary for our PD. Uh, our PD is currently working out at 665 square feet, uh, so about a third of what is, is needed. Uh, that triggered, as I mentioned, it was April 19th when we got it, uh, that triggered the city council looking, uh, and the city looking for options, uh, as to, uh, how we would address that. If you'll also notice, uh, site are on, in your needs assessment, the needs assessment, they noted site issues. So those are some, uh, impervious coverage and, and build-out issues uh, that we currently face on the municipal site that we have there in the park. Uh, common misconception is, is the idea that the city can kind of freely build or use that space throughout the entire park. In fact, the city only has zone for municipal use about one acre. And, uh, for various reasons, the impervious cover, um, limitation there is only going to be about, in the ballpark of about 22,000, uh, square feet of which we're already using, uh, just shy of 15,000 square feet. Uh, so we do have, uh, some coverage limitations there. And as I mentioned before, that's what prompted us to go out and start looking at alternatives. Our alternatives that we started looking into were in our commercial district, specifically leasing, uh, potentially leasing some, uh, property. Uh, I think we were all a little bit taken aback with the, uh, the price, uh, per square foot, um, out there. Um, I mean, good on our commercial district, I suppose, and our office leasing out there, but, uh, we thought best case scenario on the low side, we were going to get $35 a square foot plus triple net. Uh, about the same time, we had a conversation with, uh, the more recent owner, I suppose, of 503 Vale about that possibly being, um, a use for, uh, PD or other municipal. And, uh, you know, I guess that conversation, uh, was being looked at uh, from a distance and, and try to figure out how we could possibly afford to pay for it. And the short answer ends up being we didn't think we could pay market, certainly not, uh, what, uh, the current owner, uh, paid for the property. Uh, we went back and forth, um, with consideration there and the short answer is that, uh, property owner had, uh, another offer came in and gave the city kind of a, a last bite at the apple. Uh, and, uh, we negotiated a potential price at the 1.2, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with now. Um, and, uh, yeah, that, contextually, that's where we, that's where we've arrived. So, uh, I would suggest that it does not check all the boxes, uh, for everybody. I think we can all be pretty aware of that or are certainly aware of that. But I would also offer, uh, that considering the constraints and the limited options that we do have, um, this checks most of those boxes. And I'll also say that another caveat to that is checking boxes isn't the only thing here. It's how we wait. And I'll also say that another caveat to that is checking boxes isn't the only thing here. It's how we wait those boxes, right? Uh, so uh, whereas it might make uh, bottom line financial sense, uh, perhaps it doesn't make uh, sense with the overall greater aesthetic uh, or um, you know, uh, quality of life, for instance. So uh, in any case, not here to necessarily advocate uh, for this, uh, aside from saying, depending on how the community decides to wait uh, those boxes, um, this certainly seems to check uh, more than our alternatives do. Uh, that's, that's what brings us uh, to this point. Uh, and just to be clear, um, we were looking and have been looking for over a year, uh, how to, how to solve uh, for our spatial needs. Um, as indicated in the Brinkley Sargent report, uh, that as I mentioned before, was commissioned uh, better part of two years ago.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mayor Dyson. Any questions from the commission for him at this point? And if not, we'd love for you to stick around and be able to answer them if some come up later. But anybody have anything they really want to ask right now? All right, Amber, why don't we go ahead and start taking uh, comments from the public through, uh, do you want to explain to them the process again for those who joined late?
Sure, there should be. Um, if you're, if you've joined by iPad or over iPhone, there should be three little dots. Click on those and you're, you, you should see a hand that you can raise. If you join by computer, it will be at the bottom middle of your computer to raise your hands. And then uh, by phone, press star to get you to the menu so you can raise your hands. Chairman, I do see we have Larry Hauser who has his hand raised. I'm going to unmute him. You can unmute yourself now, Larry. And I'm going to lower your hand. Um, you have the floor. He's still on mute.
Yeah, just a reminder, there, unlike Zoom, you'd have to take that extra step to unmute yourself. Um, Amber can't, can't turn on your mic for you.
Okay. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Hauser.
Okay. Yes, and thank you uh, very much for allowing me to speak before your committee. Um, and thank the mayor and the city council, and especially the Rollingwood Police, who um, I want to be the first to, to be able to say that we think the Rollingwood Police are fantastic, provide a great service, made Rollingwood one of the safest neighborhoods in Austin. Um, and we want the best for them. Uh, and we understand your constraints uh, in terms of expansion of City Hall. Um, uh, I've looked at your needs assessment facilities master plan that was done in 2019, which is very comprehensive and um, is showing that uh, the police are going to need at least 1,700 square feet. Um, and I understand that it, there is a possibility of, of doing something at City Hall, which is in an area that is already zoned for governmental and institutional. Um, both you, one of your city council members and one of our neighbors has used the phrase um, best and highest use of property, um, referring both to um, the commercial end of Rollingwood near B Caves, where um, we can uh, utilize that area to enhance our commercial footprint. And also in the area that's already zoned, um, in the, in the center of Rollingwood with, with the pool and the baseball fields and City Hall and the park. Um, that is already zoned, um, and is neatly tucked away in the city. Um, and we would hope that we could utilize that space to a better degree. 503 Vale is zoned as residential. Um, I have, my wife and I have lived here for 26 years. We're at 2404 Rollingwood directly across the street. Uh, I'm a physician, my wife's an attorney. We've raised our girls, our grandchildren are running around now. We have uh, for 26 years, uh, walked up and down uh, the road to uh, the Zilker Clubhouse. And uh, you know, we feel very safe over there. I know people are concerned that there was a, a dead body dropped over there not too long ago. There was actually uh, another dead body dropped in my daughter's neighborhood who lives off of Amherst. Um, over uh, near Duvalm in the DuMaine area, uh, by the train tracks. And so um, these were not crimes that were done in the neighborhoods. These are just um, you know, parts of crimes that were done elsewhere. Um, as I've told the city council before, um, I have worked with law enforcement my entire career. 35 years as a psychiatrist. I ran the psychiatry at the Travis County Jail for 17 years. Watched them redo their jail, um, and build on top of an existing structure that was already there. And um, our concern is that we moved into this neighborhood along with many of our neighbors. Um, I believe you've gotten uh, some letters and attachments from Grant Sparks. I hope you've been able to look at. Um, and um, that, that area has been zoned as residential. Um, we have 29 signatures now of people in the immediate area who are um, just now learning about this and who are opposed to the idea of rezoning this particular lot to a governmental institutional um, zone. Um, it would absolutely affect the quality of our life. It would change the character of our neighborhood in Rollingwood. Uh, we're in a beautiful part of Rollingwood, uh, that blends into the park system. And um, a governmental institutional, commercial, anything other than residential footprint on that piece of property would be extremely disruptive. It would disrupt the status quo of this part of the city. It would increase our noise. We're looking at a minimum of 14 parking spots and.
Hey, Dr. Hauser, we're, we're well past three minutes. So I'm going to ask you to go ahead and uh, summarize and complete. Thank you.
Okay, it would increase noise, increase traffic, and we feel like um, this is not the appropriate place uh, to rezone uh, for a governmental um, area. And it would, it would remarkably devalue our properties. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We do appreciate them. Um, we'd love to hear from anybody else. Please signify your interest in speaking by raising your hand. And Amber, I'll let you uh, work it.
Chairman, we have Brooke Brown, who has her hand raised. I've unmuted you, Brooke. Unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Brooke, we can't hear you. You may need to click the unmute button. It's usually uh, on a computer, it's a little microphone. Otherwise, you gotta click the three buttons, I think, the little three dots. But we can't hear you. Her mic is still showing as muted.
Oh, there she goes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can't hear you, but let me try this again. Thank you for having, uh, giving us the, the opportunity to speak today. Uh, my concern is that this, the, the actual zoning application here may be incorrect. Uh, it is showing that um, this property would be accessed from the Zilker Park Clubhouse Road. And as I look at that tract, there's about 20 feet of park property between the road, 15 to 20 feet of park property between the road and the back of the lot. And so my question is, uh, has the city of Rollingwood secured access across that parkland that belongs to the city of Austin? And if not, then I think the zoning application you have before you needs to be redone before it's considered because it's indicating access would come via the park road. Uh, I mean, the second issue that I have with the zoning application is that, uh, as Mr. Hauser mentioned, that the police alone need 14 parking spaces. But they certainly don't need all the square footage of this house. So how would you accommodate the parking needs that the police have versus the, the mismatch in square footage the police need? If this is just going to be for police, and if it's going to be for other city activities, then you've got even additional parking issues there. So those are the things I would like for you to consider. Um, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Chairman, we have Grant Sparks with his hand up. I have unmuted him. Grant, you can unmute yourself. And you have the floor.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I, um, I'll echo a little bit of what Dr. Hauser said. And I don't want to monopolize much of your time because I've submitted some strong letters in opposition, which hopefully you've all had a chance to review and circulate, talk amongst yourselves. Um, I, like Dr. Hauser, had about 25 years in law enforcement, uh, local, state, federal. Um, big fan of the police department, huge supporter of law enforcement. So to me, this isn't about the department. I just want that to be clear, how appreciative I am of their efforts. But my, my concerns are largely set out uh, in the two letters that I submitted to the city council on the Planning and Zoning Commission. But in short, the, the, I don't believe there's been enough input from the adjacent impacted residents. Um, that haven't solicited and reported uh, their responses and not enough time's been afforded for, for them to give thoughtful consideration to this rezoning initiative. Uh, I'll share with you that in less than, in less than a week, like, like Dr. Hauser said, I spoke directly with no less than 30 uh, adjacent residents who authorized me to represent to you and the council that they're opposed. And that's just folks that, you know, we've all got our challenges in COVID times, and I don't have everybody's contact information. But that's a lot of people that are opposed, are adjacent. And um, this contrasts greatly with the four or five houses that, that had been represented by some as being opposed. Um, it's in direct contrast with, with um, uh, with that description. I suspect there's many more that are opposed that haven't really had an opportunity to, to fully um, uh, investigate this. Um, in, in short, I don't believe there's a necessity to move quickly on such uh, a significant permanent change to our city uh, and neighborhood. It's going to change the complexion of this side of Rollingwood forever. Um, I question uh, why this is such an emergency. I'd like to ask the city council or someone to put me in touch directly with the property owner uh, to see if this matter is really as urgent as it had been represented to be. My sense is that that uh, property owner, well, I, it's my sense and my knowledge that he's got a servant's heart. He's terribly philanthropic. If, if we need more time on the clock to fully vet this, I believe he'll, he'll give it. Um, I am disappointed in some misrepresentations in the uh, zone change request application. Um, I can provide that and the city can provide it to anybody, uh, uh, if they want to take a look at it. Um, and then lastly, it's been represented that a relocation would signal, uh, sort of signal a presence to uh, others, outsiders, would be lawbreakers, that law enforcement is watching and responsive uh, to folks that are coming in to, to, to do things in Rollingwood. And I just simply don't think that pairs well with, with the stated desire to, to have a innocuous, well-blended structure that resembles the current uh, residential neighborhood aesthetic. I don't think you can have it both ways. Either we're going to have a strong law enforcement presence on the western boundary, or we're going to have something that blends well and looks like a residential home that meets the character of this side of Rollingwood. So in, in conclusion, I'll ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission deny rezoning, even though I know we're, we're not to that point yet. Or at least at a minimum, slow things down significantly. So uh, we collectively have the time to absorb all the consequences of this, uh, what I view as a really, really, really significant rezoning measure. Thanks for the, for letting me share those comments.
Thank you, Grant. Um. Next person, please, who's interested in speaking, please signify by raising your hand by clicking the icon.
Chairman, we have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, well, we do appreciate those who have come to uh, speak and, and give their thoughts on this. I will also encourage the community to send in written letters, uh, like Mr. Sparks did. Those are extremely helpful, not only to our commission, but to city council as well. Um, to be frank, we don't read Nextdoor comments or Facebook comments, and those aren't entered into the record. We may read them, but we're not going to bring those into the record for official. So it really is a case where you need to write a simple email to uh, cityadmin@cityofrollingwood.com. And those will be included in the official record. Um, again, we don't include comments on Nextdoor, that type of stuff, in our deliberations. So um, all right, commission, um, this is a great chance for us. We're just initiating the conversation again. We're not taking any action today. Um, but I'm sure there's some, some thoughts and some questions. And we'd love, uh, this is a great opportunity for everyone to take a, a chance and discuss their thoughts. Would anybody like to go first, or anybody in particular? Alex, I can see you, but I can't hear you. She muted? No, she's on.
She's on.
You might want to call in your uh, tech support staff. Um, get highly paid in donuts and ice cream to come check, see if we can do it. Oh, while Alex is working on it, is there um, anyone else who have, who would like to ask any questions of either the mayor or city staff?
Yeah, I'm um, I am curious. I, I, I sort of also would like to understand the urgency around this. Um, it does seem like a big decision and, and maybe perhaps there is urgency, but um, to be, to understand that a little bit more intimately. Um. I also logistically um, agree that the parking seems problematic. 14 cars on that lot seems challenging. Um, and I've seen the um, schematic was produced and it doesn't appear to show 14 parking spaces. So I'm curious if we can get a little more detail on how that might work. Um, and then, you know, I'd also like to understand, um, you know, the needs assessment showed 1,600 or some odd square required for the police station. And um, and apparently we have 7,000 square feet of impervious cover left on the um, city property. And I have no idea what configuration that is or what the city property looks like. I'm curious if, um, you know, can that be used or whatnot? So. I don't know who's best equipped to answer that.
And, and I don't know if we necessarily need an answer just today, but it's a good, these are good topics for which we could, we can bring up. If you want city staff to go back and research and bring back questions, answers, it's a great opportunity for them to understand what we're looking at. Um, as y'all know, the rules of open government require that we kind of discuss these things uh, in open, in the public, under the eye of the public. And it's a great chance to get those questions across. So I heard, I heard two, or I heard a couple of things, which was one, parking requirements and how that would fit the site. Um, and then also the availability of, of the potential to develop uh, in its, in the current location and what. And then three, generally, why are we rushing? Um, ma- mayor, if you would like to take an opportunity to answer, we're happy to have you, uh, happy to have you discuss if you'd like to.
Well, hey, um, if I, if I can interject, because I've got one more question, I think maybe the mayor, this is Jamil, maybe the mayor can touch on.
Okay.
And that is um, uh, if I understand some of the, some of the logistics, um, there is a scenario where if we choose to not put the PD permanently at this location, that we still have a stopgap issue. Um, if we choose to build the PD at the current location of City Hall. And it would be costly to go rent space, et cetera. And so i- is one solution to acquire the And so is one solution to acquire the vaal property with the certainty that that is not a long-term solution, but the possibility that it is a stopgap solution?
Sorry, Jamil, this is Mayor Dyson. I'm not sure if, if that's a question, or, but yes, obviously, that's, that is a, that is a possible, as a possible scenario for this as well. You know, I have heard some commentary on, you know, the potential of, of selling this property, the city acquiring it presumably at an attractive valuation, and then subsequently selling somewhere down the line. I just want to underscore that we, we are very clear on the city side that speculating on real estate in such a way is improper with tax dollars. And I would invite anybody that needs to have clarity on that to, to talk with Charlie. So just to be abundantly clear, the city would never engage, and is not our intent to engage in acquiring this property for the, for the purposes of speculating in any, in any fashion. I'm sorry, there were a lot of questions thrown there, and, and Mike, I'll be happy to, to, to address them. Just help, help keep me intellectually honest and bring me back if I run off on a rabbit trail. There's obviously a lot of questions and a lot of information. With regards to immediacy, the immediacy is a result of the fact that seller came with another offer and said, we have another offer. If the city is interested, it's kind of now or never, or we're going to go a different direction. So that was, that was the impetus to getting the city, you know, either, we either preserve our optionality, or we, we do not view this as an option, and we walk from it. So by getting an offer and getting the home under contract and even acquiring the home, what that does is preserve the option for the city to engage the community. As we've obviously heard, the city, the community is very interested in being engaged, believe city council. Certainly, I would agree that that is the right way to go about these things. So I would underscore that one of the reasons, and to illustrate that, illustrate my point, the way we were funding that, we put a cap on the funding for simply the, the acquisition of the property. And the idea, obviously, for all of us would be to go back and engage the community in a larger discussion about what and if the development of this property for PD, what that would actually look like and how that, how that functioned. So again, the immediacy was down to the fact that this was a competitive situation on a piece of property. To preserve the optionality, we needed to jump in or we didn't, right? I hope that satisfactorily answers that question. I would also tell you that it seems immediate with regards to 503 vale, but the discussion on its spatial needs goes back years. And a ZDX goes back years as well. So the city's, the city's problem isn't a new problem. It's just the matter of preserving this level of optionality that came to the forefront a couple of months ago. And again, it was a couple of months ago, and I think we've all done it our best. We can always do better about getting messaging out for folks. I am disappointed to hear one of the commenters note that there were a number of people that were unaware still. That's surprising. I know I personally have reached out to a number of people, and I know city council members have done the same. I will tell you that there have been a rash of changing opinions, so numbers that were reported weeks ago may have been accurate, then maybe don't hold or appear not to hold as, as much accuracy today. And that's obviously, you know, perfectly within people's purviews to change their minds. That said, I do think it's borderline disingenuous to, to suggest that numbers have been, you know, misrepresented, I suppose. That's certainly not the intent of anybody here. I don't think anybody has an agenda aside from solving, solving for the problem that has been properly researched and, and reported on in the needs assessment that you guys all have, that is open to the public and available to the public. So as far as costs go, the needs assessment suggests that the, to meet the needs in city, in the city property, which again is, is one acre and does not extend to the rest of the park. If it were to extend to the rest of the park, we'd be going through a very similar rezoning question. It's actually a little bit more robust for process to rezone parkland. But we would have to rezone the park if we needed or intended to move anything away from that one acre tract that is currently zoned GI. With regards to the impervious cover, you are correct. It's on page five. We do have approximately 7,000 square feet that is available. Just so that everyone's clear, I keep hearing a bunch of numbers being thrown around that are, you know, a hundred or a couple hundred feet one way or the other. So that everyone is abundantly clear, I am rounding up to the highest 100. So if it is 1,783 square feet, I am rounding up to 1,800, just to be abundantly clear and abundantly transparent on where I'm getting my numbers. That same needs assessment suggests that building, we have, they presented an option 1A and an option 2A. Those were selected by city council among a number of options that were brought by Brinkley Sargent for potential build outs. The sticker price on those is $4,967,000 for 1A, and $4,916,000 for option 2A. We got sticker shock there, and which was really a large part of the catalyst for us to start looking at options. Options, for instance, right now, we're looking at a consideration of purchasing veil for 1.2. We would build, you know, I, I think there are some folks that, that think maybe a remediation of the, of the existing structure makes sense. I personally do not fall into that camp. I think that when you get into it structurally, the building needs to come down, which is perfectly okay with me, as I think 1.2 million is still a pretty good dollar amount to pay for the dirt. You get a new structure that comes up. That new structure would be between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet, depending on what the needs assessment there is. You'll note that that number is a little bit higher than what's in our needs assessment report, and I would assume that's because, well, I don't assume, I'm making a, an adjustment probably could serve to be vetted a little bit better, but based on the fact that there wouldn't be shared common spaces, right? So the needs assessment does presume a shared, some shared common areas, including restrooms, entry spaces, public spaces, that kind of thing. So presumably, you'd need that over at, at 503 Vale if you separated the properties, you needed independently. At a build out of roughly 200 and, or $200, somewhere between $200 and $300 there, you're talking with contingencies, construction price around $750,000. Mike, this is your, your ballgame, right? This is, this is your purview. You can tell me whether you think those numbers are, are right or wrong. We have, I have explored that with a couple of, of other builders, and they think pricing is, is fair there. So what you're looking at on 503 Vale is all in on a construction cost at approximately $1.9 million. You could take the current City Hall, do very limited increases in impervious coverage at City Hall, and do a substantial and probably a really, really quality renovation at City Hall for about $150 a square foot. And ended up, what you end up with is an all-in total price renovating all municipal facilities and needing your needs assessment for, you know, $3 million, maybe three and some change, which is almost $2 million less than what your needs assessment is called for. So for, again, from a bottom-line perspective, if that's all we were measuring on, which I would agree, that's not the only thing we should measure on. But if that were the only thing we were measuring on, this is the option that makes the best financial sense. And I say this is the option, this is the option that has been presented that makes the best, best financial sense. Wide open for anybody to come up with other options. And, and again, this goes back to my initial comment, it depends on how you weight all the boxes, right? It's, it's, you know, I, I would argue that every single one of the comments and concerns are beyond valid from, from the folks that have, have sent letters in and have joined us this afternoon for commentary. In any case, that's, I, I think that's answers to questions one and two, Mike, and if you could remind me of what your third point was, I'd be happy to address that as well.
Yeah, I think the third, those are helpful. Thank you. I think the, the third point was just parking and trying to understand how 14 cars are going to make the property.
Sure. Well, and that's, I think that's, the short answer there is we're not, we're not to that point, right? That would be, that's a design discussion. That's, that's a discussion that necessarily incurs cost. It would have been, it would not have been prudent for the city to design out of, out of hand or out of the gate exactly what this is going to look like on the presumption that it's even, even going to happen. I think if we were to do something like that, the immediate criticism would, would be that this is a foregone conclusion, right? Here's your evidence. So instead, what I would, what I would argue is that the thing that makes the most sense, if we, if, big, big if, we were to go forward with this, the thing that makes sense is to put a, either an architectural or design board in place comprised of residents that would obviously then interact with a chosen architectural firm that would help us understand specifically what our needs and our options are there. I have heard, obviously, a couple of times about driveway opening up onto the Zilker Preserve Parkway, or the Zilker Clubhouse Parkway, or, and apologies, it's the Arnulfo Alfonso Drive, I believe. But the short answer is, again, all of these are exceptionally valid and need to be fully vetted. You're just not there yet. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't, just wouldn't make sense for us to vet these things, not even having a vested interest in the property yet.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I've got a question, maybe on just kind of process. So my understanding is that, obviously, we're not making any decisions today, but there's a, a potential request for rezoning of this, which would allow the city to acquire it. And then there's been a lot of discussions today about, you know, planning, et cetera. Can you walk me through the process for that? You know, if there were a zoning change made, if this property were acquired, you know, what are next steps for, you know, approval to build, remodel, funding for that? And are there any, you know, can anybody speak to the official kind of procedures for additional, you know, citizen commenting and/or citizen, you know, formal approval of the matter, you know, if that's part of the process?
Sure. So I will, I'll let the official, the administration handle official timelines. But what I would tell you is, I don't think that, I certainly don't, and, and I'll venture a guess on behalf of the city council, I don't think they would have an appetite either for, to proceed without significant community input. I don't think it's lost on anybody, the magnitude of the potential change that we're talking about. And it's just, in, in short, I think there would be a tremendous amount of community engagement, certainly coming from the design side. Everything, of course, is, as Jordan pointed out earlier, all of these discussions have to happen in, in the public sphere, right? So it, in large part, it depends on how engaged the, the community chooses to be on this, right? We've talked to a heck of a lot more people than have written in letters and appeared today. So hopefully, we would continue to see that. You know, previously, some previous examples of, of community engagement and, and the city-led community engagement are the workshops that we've held through branding, the workshops that we've held. Sorry, it looks like Alex is having a problem here.
She is. Alex, if you want to call in, and if you can email Ashley the last four digits of your telephone number, I can promote you, your telephone to panelists, and then you can participate.
Hey, I'm, I'm really sorry. I'm going to have to drop off. I have a, another meeting that I just can't push. It's at two.
And I've got to get off at two as well.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, guys. I am, for my part, I am wide open. Give me a call. I'm happy to discuss it with you guys, and I'm happy to, again, underscore that there are a number of, of additional public meetings ahead of, ahead of this. You guys are scheduled to, short, in, in short, Tony, you guys are scheduled to take up another public comment and potentially take action in June. The city council in June is also scheduled, well, is anticipating taking action in June. So in the meantime.
I'm going to try to ask before I have to jump off, and maybe this is for Charlie. One would be, if we get to the point where we're asked for action, if we approved a zoning change allowing for the city to purchase the property, could that approval be made contingent upon, you know, some sort of citywide vote, citywide process, you know, bond election, et cetera? Meaning that, you know, that if P&amp;Z approved zoning change for acquisition, that there, that we could require some other sort of bar for actually moving through, moving forward with the project? Formal, you know, bar that wouldn't allow the city to move forward without, you know, something else procedural, you know, that requires significant citizen input? And then the follow-up to that is, if we were able to do that, and, and then the city did not, you know, meet those requirements and get that approval, is there anything restricting the city from then selling the property and rezoning back to a residential use? And, you know, if that all played out, is there anything that would, you know, trigger problems for the city as it related to what the mayor mentioned earlier about municipalities inability to speculate in real estate?
The quick answer to your first question is, P&amp;Z can certainly make any recommendation that they choose, bearing in mind that the P&amp;Z is purely a recommending body. It's nothing that's binding on the city council or the city based on their recommendation. With respect to your second question, you know, it's going to be dependent upon what those, you know, extra steps or requirements would be that, that the city decided to put on itself as to their ability to, you know, rezone or, or do other things. Because, for example, well, I don't know, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but it's going to be dependent. The answer to the second question is really going to be dependent upon what, if they choose to put those types of bindings on themselves, what those are before I can sort of evaluate or analyze moving, moving forward, how they can handle it.
Maybe to simplify it, if, if the city acquired this property after it was rezoned to municipal use, and then for whatever reason, the project did not move forward, is the city is the city restricted in its ability to then sell the property or rezone the property to res, back to residential and sell the property potentially at a profit? Is that, is that something that's restricted?
Just sort of as a baseline authority, there isn't any, currently any impediment to them to be able to do that.
Well, unfortunately I have to jump off and host another call that I can't, that I've already moved back once.
Well. Sorry, go ahead.
And I don't know if that ends the meeting because of the number of P&amp;Z participants or what.
Yeah, it does. We won't have a quorum.
Well, Jamil.
Can anybody hear me now?
Jamil.
You have four, right?
Yeah, Jamil's still on the phone. It looks like he is.
I'm still here.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Okay, well, apologies. I don't have to sign off.
Yeah.
Okay, Alex, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I've lost the huge audience. I think we're in the weeds here and I'm, I'm pretty concerned that, my first concern is about the immediate residents. And I think what happened was they were approached and they were kind of sold this idea that was hard for them to disagree with. And I think when they had time to think about it and the implications of it and the impacts to them, that's when it settled in that this isn't something that they were comfortable with, just to your point, Mike, that people seem to change their mind. I'm hearing it echo in my voice. So on the, on the face of things, I think your rendering is lovely. It seems like a nice idea. What a beautiful sight, all of those things. But it's not what those people that live there signed up for. And even I think that one of the residents that's nearby that's being touted as in favor of it actually is neutral. And they said they wouldn't object to it, but they're not going to lobby for it. It's not something they want. And I think that overwhelmingly people want that to stay as a residential property. They don't want it to be a business. They don't want it to be a showhouse. They don't want it to be a police station. And I disagree with the idea of going ahead and securing the property while you think about it because that, you can't walk that back. And then when you start to remodel the city offices, the city staff is going to move into the police station. And I don't disagree that the city deserves better amenities, keeping with the city that's kind of updating itself. I think they absolutely deserve that. But we have a piece of property that is zoned for government and I think that we need to focus on that. And to say that there's not enough space or it's too expensive, I think we can reexamine that. But for me and others, they worry about project creep. And I hope you have all read Grant's letter because he's done a lot of research and there's a great deal of information in there. But one thing people worry about is the precedent. There's a vacant lot across the street from me right now in Rollingwood. You know, if the city were to decide to buy that and build facilities there, I would be furious. I mean, that's just, that's not why I move there. So we can spend a lot of time discussing the merits of this particular site, but I think that you're going to find overwhelming opposition. And then we're going to all have spent a lot of time doing this. But my final point is that what bothers me is that this is coming up right now during a time when we're talking about only essential business during the COVID crisis, at a time when the community is trying to heal and come together. And this is just sowing division. And it's really unfortunate because it's caused a lot of stress for a lot of people. So. Sorry for the rant.
Okay, well, is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item? It doesn't look like there is. We, we've still got quorum. If we could maybe move on to the next item is number seven, discussion on the residential tree canopy management ordinance. I think Tony and Jordan wanted to discuss this item and since they're not here, I think maybe we will leave that to the next agenda. And the rest of the items are reports from me and I can go quickly through them. The city council did select Pegasus Planning to undergo a comprehensive plan for the city of Rollingwood. We are working on the execution of the contract documents now and expect that to get underway very soon. We are, they have proposed a six-month timeline. They're going to focus on our commercial district and the, the major issues of the residential district that we seem to face a lot of planning and zoning, which are front yard fences, setbacks and what else? Accessory buildings. Yes. That's what they're going to do. We will keep you updated and involved. The task force that was formed a while ago will be the official committee to oversee. They're made up of council, P&amp;Z members and RCDC members. City engineering services, we, during the pandemic, we have opted not to make drastic changes. We did receive proposals as we decide to proceed with selection of the city engineer will keep you posted. The drainage criteria manual, it did not need to come before you all, but council did make a change to eliminate the requirement, the drainage facilities had to be 10 feet setback from the property line. This seemed to be causing some issues with what the council lovingly referred to as the moat issue, where they had to build drainage facilities 10 feet in, but they also wanted to build their fence on their property line. And so it created this 10 feet of, of weird space and, and so they took care of and addressed that. And then you have an official report in your agenda for the update on the council actions. Future meeting date and agenda items, June 10th is your next meeting. You will have a public hearing on the rezoning of 503 Vale. And then possibly the tree canopy management ordinance. If there's anything else, if, if y'all want anything on the next agenda, feel free to reach out to us. We can make sure those items get on the agenda and you get heard. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move. I will move to adjourn.
Amy moves to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 2:09. Thanks, guys. Great meeting.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.